Okay, I'd like to call the City of Elkhorn Common Council, December 4th, 5:30 meeting to order. If we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is why I am in the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Bruce Lechner.
Here.
Tim Sharoda.
Here.
Gary Payson Jr. is absent. Ron Dunwoodie?
Here.
There we go.
Scott McClory?
Here.
Ken Minell?
Here.
Carol Young?
Here.
Next, public comment. Anybody here for public comment tonight? If no one's here for public comment, we'll move on. We have the consent agenda. Council meeting minutes of November 20th, '23. They're all in your packet.
I'd like to motion to approve the council minutes from 20th November.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any changes or discussion needed in the minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed for the council meeting minutes of November 20th, 2023. Report of city officers. Mayor, the only thing I want to speak before the swearing-in is I think Saturday, the parade has a good turnout, good weather, and I want to thank DPW, the police, fire, everybody that was involved with everything. It was a good turnout. Any incidents or anything, Jewel? All good?
No, everything went well.
Everything went well. Good, yes, good. Thanks, everyone, for all the hard work and putting that parade on. Chamber, it was good turnout for the city, so. Next, swearing of temporary municipal judge, Michael J. Fitzsimmons. Ward?
Attorney Fitzsimmons. So if you would raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Michael J. Fitzsimmons.
I, Michael J. Fitzsimmons.
Having been appointed to the office of the City of Elkhorn Municipal Judge?
Having been appointed to the office of City of Elkhorn Municipal Judge?
But have not yet entered upon the duties thereof?
But have not yet been entered upon the duties thereof?
Swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States?
Swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States?
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin?
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin?
And will faithfully discharge the duties of said office to the best of my ability?
And will faithfully discharge the duties of said office to the best of my ability?
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Judge Fitzsimmons.
Thank you very much. This is a great community. Thank you for putting your faith in me.
Congratulations and thank you. Welcome aboard. Next, Adam.
Yeah, so few updates. One, we recently found out that the former Holton Band Factory on 320 North Church Street has been sold to a company that we understand is going to be leasing that or it's going to be occupied by windowwell experts. We are currently in contact with DNR to try to make sure, to find out, you know, what, we want to make sure that the building's not used or occupied until it's environmentally safe. We were assured by the DNR that even though the ownership's transferred, that the prior owner is still on the hook for the investigation remediation that still has yet to be done. We are in the process of meeting, or scheduling a follow-up meeting with DNR and the new owners hopefully next week. So I know Alderman, Minell, you wanted to be part of that meeting, so we're trying to do Monday, but I'll let you know once I find out from the windowwell whether or not that's going to work for them. So we're working on that and definitely going to be diligent to make sure that, you know, no occupancy permit or anything is issued by the city until the DNR and DHS are on board, so. Other updates, actually, the mayor read my mind because I wanted to thank DPW for the, first off, the Christmas decorations downtown. It's great on light up Elkhorn, I think, on Friday. The tree lighting was really good, and then, of course, they had to let it go afterwards. So thank you to DPW for putting up all those lights every year. And then also want to thank DPW and the PD for helping out on the Christmas parade. Everything was great. Crowd control was good. Yeah, it was a good event, so I echo the mayor's comments on that. And just wanted to let council know, I know a few months ago, council approved using a new credit card processing service for tax payments. Unfortunately, after we, the council approved that and we responded to the company we were working with, they notified us that there was going to be additional processing fee that they not told us about. So we then told them that we would, you know, hold off. So we're going to be using the existing service that we have, so residents can still pay online with credit cards, but it's just, it's a different company that does charge a higher fee. But we'll try to get this resolved for next year, but we just weren't particularly happy that they threw an additional fee on to us after we had talked to them originally, so. And then, I know, Carl, you've got an update about the pet mayor?
Yep, so we are in the process of our second election for the pet mayor, so Hershey was the pet mayor last year. The focus is to raise money for Lickland Animal Shelter and the Elkhorn Food Pantry. This is the first year that voting's open to the public, so anybody that would like to vote, it's a minimum of $1 donation, and those proceeds will go to those two groups. And the election started today, December 4th through the 15th, and you can vote either at the library or at the recreation center.
But you can only have one vote, right, Carl?
Yes, that is correct. There's 12 pets in the running, by the way, so a lot of competition.
And I guess just lastly, you may have seen, we've been working with Creekside on trying to issue a soil erosion control permit because they wanted to do some preliminary clearing and grubbing of the property. There were some issues with trying to get the plans to make sure, wanted to make sure that they were not going to impact any waterways in the area. It sounds like they, on Friday, decided to withdraw their request for the soil erosion control permit, in part because they are trying to resolve those issues with the water and the 100-year potential flood area. So that's just what's been going on there. You know, Naomi, city engineer, has been working hard with the rest of the team at Kapor on trying to, you know, respond to the plans that have been submitted and have been providing feedback. Just been a lot of back-and-forth discussions and meetings, and so we'll see what happens next. But other than that, I mean, the plan's still, the project's still moving forward. It's just they may not try to do some of that preliminary clearing that they wanted to do before the full winter set in, so. Those are my updates, unless council has any questions for me.
Any questions, Randall? Okay, moving on. Presentation, we have Brian Romer. Is that correct?
Raymer.
Raymer, okay, sorry. Municipal Advisor, Aylers and Associates, Incorporated. Update regarding water utility conventional rate case application with the Public Service Commission. Welcome.
Thank you all for having us here tonight. I also have my colleague Lisa Trebatuski, who's been working hard on the case alongside me for the city. So we wanted to come back. If you don't recall, we were here in July talking about filing the rate case application with the Public Service Commission to adjust water rates after council approval. We did that, and the Public Service Commission goes through a full review, and actually, what they do is even just beyond kind of your application. They use it as their time to audit the utility from the last time you went through this process, which was 2017. So they had about six years of information to go through, so understand that they're not only looking at your current situation, but looking to see where your auto reports have been, if they have any questions. They had a bunch of fun questions. We got through that process. Now they released what's called the revenue requirement, which is ultimately, you apply for a percentage revenue increase, and then they go through their audit process, and they adjust it to what they feel your revenue adjustment increase should be. So I'll be reviewing that tonight to kind of go over the changes. So looking at that, I kind of talked about, you know, phase one and phase two. We're going to look at presenting the results of what the PSC has provided here, and then ultimately, after reviewing with staff, you know, they thought, given the timeline that we have to respond, which is five business days, so we technically have until midnight tonight to respond to the PSC. They don't really hold you to that too strict outside of, they'll want some response relatively soon. So we thought, we do have a meeting, we have an opportunity to bring it to council, and so we're going to kind of go through what our recommended response would be. So the PSC review on the next slide kind of indicates that we initially set forth about a 21% adjustment. It was 20.8% in terms of what we applied for. And then the PSC's review came back with a 24% revenue adjustment, and I'll kind of walk through why. So they go through and they'll adjust what you've projected for your revenues, expenses, asset base, and then they'll make their adjustments. So for revenues, they had no changes to the projections that were presented to them. For the expenses, they had adjusted the O&amp;M and depreciation expenses down $46,000. They had increased the value of your system, which in turn increased costs about $60,000. That's just basically how assets were booked, and after their review, where they feel they should be booked. And then finally, the biggest change was the PSC's benchmark rate of return from the time that we filed the application had changed and gone up. What the PSC rate of return is, if you recall from our discussion in July of this year, was they benchmark all utilities at the time that you go in for a conventional rate case to what they call a rate of return on your asset base. That asset base, just think of undepreciated value of the system. PSC says we got to earn X percent. That in turn is what your revenues should recover for that cost bucket outside of depreciation and your O&amp;M expenses. So the bond market has gone up. The PSC's rate of return is tied to a rolling average of interest rates, and since the bond market went up, the PSC's rate of return went up during the time of their review from 6.2%, which it was at the time that we filed, to 6.8%. So by that change in that rate of return, that increased the costs or, you know, added revenues needed by $119,000. So this is all to say, kind of going with the adds and subtracts, the total increased revenue need in the eyes of the PSC is about $132,000, $133,000. So of course, we can just kind of go with what the PSC says, but what we do in all cases, in terms of that we work on, is we'll rerun that with your long-range cash flow, right? Does it pay for your current obligations and does it pay for your future obligations? So we want to see, is this too much? Is this too little? Et cetera. So we went through that effort on the next slide, which is a 10-year long-range cash flow analysis intended to look at kind of top to bottom revenues against expenses, what's left over for debt. Do you have enough money to pay for debt? And then kind of the ins and outs of your capital improvement program. Where does that result in kind of net annual cash flow? So the first thing that I'll point out in looking at your 2023 budget or 2023 year-end estimates here is that your revenue bond coverage is under where it should be. This is kind of why we're doing the rate adjustment. So this revenue bond coverage based off of your covenants with bondholders should be at minimum 1.25, meaning that number of, the revenue that you have left over after cash expenses should be $1.25 for every dollar of debt service. So you should have, or 125 of that debt service. So you want to have that number, be at 125. Otherwise, you're not meeting your bond covenants. What does that mean? It's going to be very hard to secure debt in the future on a revenue pledge. And the city has a lot of upcoming larger projects, as you can kind of see from the capital improvements line here. We're going to be taking on additional debt in order to fund these projects, in order to close on those loans. At the time of closure, you're going to need to prove that you have the revenues in place. So ultimately, this is why we came forward with the rate case and why we're doing this, but it should be kind of reiterated to state this is definitely something we need. We've also updated this to show kind of the budget for 2024. Obviously, with the passage of time and the passage of your budget, we've been able to update these numbers to show what your expectations are for 2024, and then advance that into the future as we did in July, looking at this 10-year cash flow. So kind of sticking with the line in terms of revenue bond coverage, I think it's kind of important to point out that the slight increase in the PSC's numbers, the adjustments made since, you know, we've done this in July, they're kind of matching or going in tandem, meaning that we're, again, still making coverage, but there'll still need to be kind of future adjustments looking into the future beyond 2025, as you'll note, that coverage is at 125 as well. So just kind of important to note that we do think, you know, the PSC's review and, you know, slightly larger increase will just provide that greater protection against, you know, inflationary expenses that you may see on day-to-day operations. So then the next slide talks about the impact on the average residential bill. I'll note that we have water and sewer here. Understand that, one, this agenda item's not for sewer. Two, we haven't done a sewer rate study. We just put it on here so you can kind of see the full picture, but we are going to focus on the water side, which is the, you know, first couple of columns on the left. So looking at what a 24% increase does kind of across the board to rates, which is your volumetric rate and your fixed service charges, that results in about a $15 change on an average monthly bill. That average usage was delineated as about 535 cubic feet per month. So of course, you know, if you use more, it might be higher because of the volumetric rate. If you use less, it might be lower due to the volumetric rate. The other thing I'll point out is, we do not know what these actual volume charges and fixed charges will be until the PSC does their next step. So not only do they decide the revenue adjustment, but then they do what's called a cost of service study and rate design, which they allocate your costs amongst all customer classes to make sure there's fair and equitable rates. They'll adjust the volumetric and fixed rate appropriately to land at the final rates. So that'll come in about 14 to 21 days after we respond to them. They'll produce another report like this, but it's much lengthier as, at as many tables long, because they go expense account by expense account to allocate those costs across the board, and then they design your rates appropriately. So I think the big picture here is just kind of 24%, kind of on an, you know, all-in basis, meaning just kind of applying that flatly to both volumetric and fixed, about a $15 change to the monthly bill. Then on the next slide, this is a rate comparison. You may recall this from the meeting in July where we kind of looked at three county area, including Walworth, Jefferson, and Racine, and the other water utilities. Again, this is water only. This does not include, you know, sewer utility or any other utility bills, but water only, and kind of comparing where you're at currently, where you're at as a result of this 24%, and then for the 10-year plan, which is the 35% or the highest amount there. So the one thing I'll point out is, you know, working with several of these utilities in this three-county areas, there are other utilities doing adjustments as well. You know, of course, to be determined where they land as a result of the PSC review, but in truth, you're not jumping anyone, kind of not moving in terms of your current position. No real change as a result of this chart and the change from the 20.8% to the 24.2%. So then on the next slide, we'll kind of wrap it up here in terms of recommendations. After our review of the revenue requirement document from the Public Service Commission, we have no disagreements with the PSC review, as I kind of stated, through the cash flow analysis. We do believe that this just kind of provides the extra protection for the utility, especially in a rising interest rate environment. The rate adjustment, again, kind of provides that minimum needed debt coverage, so we would recommend kind of moving forward with that. Another point of emphasis in talking with staff is just identifying that the last rate adjustment was completed 1-1-2017. If we kind of think about six years of inflation and getting back to that percentage, you know, if you had done three or four percents kind of in that same window, we're kind of arriving at that. So more or less, utility rates are kind of going in line with inflation, definitely needed as a result of your capital improvement program. And, you know, again, kind of in line with the inflationary costs that all utilities are facing. We do recommend using simplifies in your allowable window. Since I may not get another opportunity to speak to this in front of you, I would just say that you have an allowable window of five years after the implementation date based off of the Class AB utility that you are. So the Public Service Commission regulates those windows of opportunity to adjust rates. If you remember our discussion in July, in the city, we'll only have five years to do this after these are implemented. So you won't be able to until 12 months after the date of implementation to analyze the first opportunity. So again, you're probably not going to know whether or not you can do this until 2025, but then whenever that window starts, we would definitely recommend it. Those inflationary adjustments are a way to kind of control the rate impact for the next time you need to go in for a conventional rate case. And once that five-year window is closed, again, you're forced into the conventional rate case if you need an adjustment. In talking with staff as well, we kind of were talking through future alternatives in looking to, you know, ways to kind of mitigate expenses. One thing that the council can do without PSC approval is that pilot payment or the payment in lieu of taxes that you make to the general fund. Right now, you have set that frozen at $500,000 per year. Understanding that that's a revenue for the general fund, any other changes you want to do to that and set that by resolution, understand it should be done with a complete review of its impact to the general fund. So while, of course, you could reduce this in theory to zero at any time, understand that would have a very large impact on the general fund. That would make budgeting quite difficult for the general fund, so we generally don't recommend utilities make that drastic of a change. But if you're looking, you know, for future opportunities, this is kind of an analysis for a lot of larger utilities that we do. In the next time that you'd want to do kind of a long-range cash flow for the utility, you could pair that with an analysis for the impact to the general fund to identify maybe what's an appropriate way to adjust it. The other thing that I do want to point out is, even if, let's say, you reduced it all the way to zero, you would have to go in for another conventional rate case in order to adjust your rates, understanding that you can only do so much in the eyes of the PSC. So it wouldn't automatically mean a decrease in rates. You're just decreasing your expenses for the next time you review it. But many utilities and larger utilities specifically, you know, will use this to kind of manage rates, however, need to respect the impact to the general fund as a result. So tonight's action, as kind of guided by staff and recommended by Aylers, would be kind of a consensus on our response to the PSC. Right now, our recommendation is not to disagree with the PSC's decision. I'll take any questions, comments?
Any questions, council?
Just a question, Brian. You said you're working with some jurisdictions right now on rate reviews. Are there any in the nearby area, a chance that you're working with, or?
Yeah, East Roy.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. They're going through the same process, about a 20% adjustment, but I don't believe they have their revenue requirement. Yeah, they don't. Yeah, so.
And just so council knows, I reached out to Dale Brecker at Folks and asked them, because one of the things, too, that it's a good point that Brian mentioned, not necessarily tonight, but on that list of comparative, that list of comparative rates, a lot of those, a lot of those utilities aren't AB like us, so obviously, we have a much more complex water system. So I did ask Dale to see if he knew of any other jurisdictions that are dealing with some of the same challenges that our system has in terms of, for processing and treatment. So that would be useful to find out what utilities those are and kind of what their, what their water rates are. So when I get that information, I'll pass along to council.
Well, thank you, Brian.
Yep, thank you.
Moving on to new business. Now we have discussion of possible decision regarding the Public Service Commission revenue requirement for the water fund as part of the rate case application. This is where they're going to want to move forward with the recommendation, I think, if somebody'd like to make a motion?
I move we move forward with the recommendation.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Tim Sharoda?
Yes.
Ron Dunwoodie?
Yes.
Scott McClory?
Yes.
Ken Minell?
Yes.
Carol Young?
Yes.
Motion passed to move forward at the recommendation from Aylers and staff, so thank you. Thank you, Brian. Next, we have Resolution 23-29, which we're going to postpone until the December 18th meeting because there's a couple of things that got left off on the pack in the, for the seasonal employees. So we will just move on to the next. Discussion of possible decision regarding proposed Resolution 23-30, a resolution amending Resolution 23-27, adopting the 2024 municipal budget and levy for taxes payable in 2024. Adam, do you want to kind of go over that, or does council need clarification on that? Everybody fine with that?
Just real briefly, we'll just say that after the last council meeting, I know the council approved the budget, the last meeting, we discovered that the previous budget had proposed, or not proposed, but had contained using $23,000 in prior unused levy from prior years. We discovered that the, that needed to be adopted by the council by two-thirds majority, and it really wasn't clear from the resolution that that approval was provided. So as part of that, we just, we further discovered that if the city wants to use prior unused levy, that you can't have an increase in your total outstanding general obligation debt, and the budget as initially approved by council would have done that. So the budget resolution for tonight would remove about $460,000 in additional debt that the city was planning on taking for next year so that we can use the unused levy. As I explained in my memo, at first, that was a big number, but there's some reasons that we're more optimistic about being able to do that, one being some additional savings and wages, as well as some, we did receive a grant for Centralia Street to do some design work, but we're, we must get the final paperwork from the feds before we get too excited about it. But, and then, as Matt informed us on Friday, it looks like DPW's, one of their purchases for $225,000 for next year has been delayed to '26 because of delivery delays. So we pretty confident that the $460,000, we could reduce the budget by that for planned borrowing. And then lastly, because of this tough trade-off where you have to decide whether to use unused levy or increase your debt because it's one or the other, and the unused levy disappears after five years if you don't use it, and realistically, we may not be able to raise the, or may not be able to get by with not taking on more debt in the future. The proposal is to, rather than use the $23,000 in unused levy, to use the full 50. That way, we have it and we don't lose it, just because we have more flexibility with the levy. We can spend it on, for example, like the police department this year and the public works, the radios for next year, for example. We can use levy money, but they weren't items that you could bond for, so having that extra levy capacity helps us. And the, and under the budget that's before you tonight, that additional $27,000 in levy that we would use above the 23 we had already included would go to capital equipment replacement fund, so it's going to help pay for things that we might otherwise take on debt for. So it would be used for, you know, it's not just going to, you know, some other, some other, other general purpose. It would be strictly for capital project, capital equipment, so.
Counsel, do I have a motion for Resolution 23-30?
Make the motion to approve Resolution 23-30.
We have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Ron Dunwoodie?
Yes.
Carol Young?
Yes.
Ken Minell?
Yes.
Scott McClory?
Yes.
Tim Sharoda?
Yes.
Motion passed, Resolution 23-30. Next, discussion of possible decision regarding 2024 to 2028 capital improvement plan. Everybody seen that in their packet? Any discussion, or do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the 2024 to 2028 capital improvement plan.
We have a motion. Do we have a second to approve?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Counsel, any questions or discussions?
The only thing I just would, just for clarification, this has been amended strictly on the, if you approved the resolution which you just adopted, this would just implement and clarify that we've taken out $466,000 in debt for next year. So that's what the changes are from what the CIP was that you guys. So that's what the changes are from what the CIP was that you guys approved at the last meeting.
Any other questions, discussion? Roll call, please.
Scott McLaurie?
Yes.
Carol Young?
Yes.
Tim Sheroda?
Yes.
Ron Dunwoodie?
Yes.
Ken Minell?
Yes.
Motion passed for the 2024 to 2028 capital improvement plan. Discussion of possible decision regarding changing the age limit for child dependents on city's employee health and dental plan. Have you seen the memo? It's a Fed thing coming down, I think, January 1st, correct, Adam?
Well, it's not so much, basically, the city currently under our current health policy allows dependents to be on the city plan until they're 27, and they get cut off or that's the age out. Our new HR generalist, Casey Keough, was doing some research and discovered that both the state and feds, their, their limit is 26 in terms of you age out once you get 26. So the question was, does council want to, you know, have our, our health plan mirror what the state and feds' guidance is, or whether you would want to continue allowing employees to be, have their dependents on the health plan until they're 27? So it's basically a one-year change. We'd go from, you know, you age out at either the current 27 or you age out at age 26. And the question is, we do have two employees right now who have dependents who are currently 26, who are on the plan. So if, you know, if you approve this tonight, you know, what do you want to, if you decide to reduce that age to, say that you age out at 26, then for those that are currently 26, do you allow them to remain on their plan until they turn 27? Or, you know, what do you want to do about those two?
Grandfather them?
Yeah, yeah, you could. Yep, that's what I'm saying. You could, you could say that they, you know, status quo for those two existing who are currently 26.
Okay.
And then it just would apply to any future dependents who are 25 or younger.
Is the effective date December for, or January 1st, 2024?
Oh, if you did the policy change.
If we didn't grandfather anybody? Yep. So is there, I get grandfathering, I'm all for that, that couple employees that are dependents that are 26 now. Do we have anyone that's, say, 25 and nine months, and February 1st, they're going to lose their insurance?
There is one 25-year-old who, I don't know if Matt, if you can, oh, that's not on there. There is one 25-year-old, I don't think they turn 26 until at least April of next year, or maybe, maybe later.
Well, the problem is, no matter, no matter when you rip the Band-Aid off, someone's going to be coming around the corner.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, every year, there's going to be somebody who's turning 25.
I guess April doesn't, doesn't concern me. If it was January or February, I'd, and you're, you're paying for someone that's 26 going on 27, but you're not going to pay for the 25-year-old that's going on 26. I could see an issue.
Would you?
Like Scott said, I'm sorry, too. You know, it's got to happen sometime.
Yep.
So it's.
I was just going to ask for clarification if it was, because I apologize, I don't remember what the date was of the 25-year-old. So if it was, you know, if you want to set a cutoff threshold of, you know, if they turn 26 after February or March, or whatever that date is, I don't know what you guys want to do, but just looking for guidance.
Or you can give them 90 days notice, correct, too? Because you have one in September turning, correct? You'd be keeping on one till September?
Correct, yes. One's April and one's September, yeah.
So going with the one if it's turning 26 in April?
Are we, are we talking about paying for the two dependents for the whole year till they reach 27? Or nine months, or whatever it happens to be?
Yeah, it'd be April and September.
Or do we just want to give a 90-day grandfather for anyone that's impacted by it?
Well, if there's, if there's other changes to the fringe benefits plan, we normally give everyone who's a city employee how much time. You know, like any, anything like historical, I unfortunately can't come up with something off the top of my head, but anything in the past that we've changed, do we, you know?
About like an increase in rate or anything, do we? No, don't have that?
I'm not aware of us having, because there's a lot of different types of fringe benefits, so it's kind of hard to say. I mean, you know, it could be vacation accrual, it can be anything like that. I wouldn't say we have a specified.
But my point is, I guess the first thing I would be thinking of is that change we made a few years ago regarding PTO. We made the decision, and then we, then we set a date forward to implement it, to let everyone, you know, get a chance to do whatever they need to do, to get ready for the change. And I guess I don't remember what that was. Was it like three months? Does anyone remember?
Well, we just did the PTO one, and I think that was in the summer, and that just took effect November 5th.
Okay.
90 days, probably.
So it was probably like a 90-day thing.
So we should give everybody about the same amount of time?
If you guys want to do this, and you want to have it effective January 1st, '24, but give a 90-day notice or something like that? Or you don't have to approve this. You don't have to change it.
But we should, regardless of grandfathering or whatever, I think we should be lockstep with the state and the Fed. We shouldn't be outside of that.
I think so, too.
So I mean, that, that's just a oops on our part that, you know, we, we didn't.
We're allowing more than what the state and Fed.
It was not an oops. It was something the insurance company told us was a thing.
Oh. Well, that's an oops on that.
Yeah.
No to that. So I, I don't have a preference. I guess, you know, the 90 days or three months or whatever, actually, that's the same thing. I just realized that, man. I, I don't have a preference, but we should give them some amount of time. It shouldn't, obviously, I think Tim was taking me down the same road. It shouldn't be effective in two weeks.
No.
So.
Thinking about this, and you're comparing it to PTO, health insurance is an expensive, scary thing for everybody. So maybe we should extend that timeout. I, I'd favor, you know, making it effective 2024 and giving them till July 1st, six months. And that, I think, in my mind, that's fair, because I hate, you'd hate to be a parent and you've got a 26-year-old at home, all of a sudden, they've lost their insurance, and what do I do? And I got an old by April 1st. Give them more, give them more time, be, be.
So the two that are 26 have until June, the person that's currently 25, no?
They, they would have, anyone that's on would have till June.
So June would be for anybody that's still on?
July 1st is six months.
July 1st for anybody who's still currently on the plan?
Anybody that's affected.
I can live with that.
Yeah, sounds good. Want to make a motion, Tim?
That's my motion, to make the change to age 26 effective January 1st, '24, and grandfathering in any dependents through, till June 30th.
June 30th.
2020.
Same thing, yeah.
So we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Tim Sheroda?
Yes.
Ron Dunwoodie?
Yes.
Scott McLaurie?
Yes.
Carol Young?
Yes.
Ken Minell?
Yes.
Motion passed for changing the age limit on the city's health, employee health and dental plan. Next, this is discussion and possible decision regarding amendment number two between FOTH Infrastructure and Environmental LLC in the city for design, bidding, construction, and loan administration fees for the 2023 South Wright Street parcel reconstruction project. That was all in your packet? Do we have a motion, or?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion to approve? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Is there any questions or discussion?
Just for, just for clarification, both of these contract changes are being requested by the DNR as part of our loan closing on the safe drinking water and clean water revolving loans that we're getting now for Centralia and Wright Street. You can see the red, that, that's the old addendum contract, just showing you what the changes are. And then the, so your council packet had two, two contracts for each project, so just clarifying that. The total contract price hasn't changed with both, it's just the format at the best of the DNR, so.
Roll call, please.
Scott McLaurie?
Yes.
Carol Young?
Yes.
Ron Dunwoodie?
Yes.
Tim Sheroda?
Yes.
Ken Minell?
Yes.
Motion passed. Next, we have discussion and possible decision regarding amendment number two between FOTH Infrastructure and Environmental LLC in the city for design, bidding, construction, and loan administration services for 2023 Centralia Street reconstruction project, Phase One. It's kind of the same thing. I'd make a motion to approve. We have a motion to approve? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve? Any further questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Sorry, I was asleep for a second. Who was the second?
I was.
Thank you. Ken Minell?
Yes.
Ron Dunwoodie?
Yes.
Carol Young?
Yes.
Scott McLaurie?
Yes.
Tim Sheroda?
Yes.
Motion passed on that amendment number two for 2023 Centralia Street reconstruction project, Phase One. We have a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.